Some of those, you know.
Well, that's what those memos are. Well, they're in the packet. There's memos in the packet.
Okay.
There is a little packet. You'll see there's three memos in there, the first three things.
Yeah, I don't have one.
Those are the stipulations that we came up with. So you can just use that memo as a staff report. My grade here. Right after the minutes, you'll see three memos that are basically staff reports. All right, you want to knock on the door? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call to order this meeting of the January 20th, 2022 City of Nashua Planning Board. Can we get a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Donches. Mike Peterson.
Here.
Scott LeClaire.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Maggie Harper. Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
Mark Bean.
Here.
Okay, we have seven present, Dan Hudson, I'm sorry.
Present.
Yep. Seven present.
Okay, so we have a quorum, so we'll move forward. Next up, approval of minutes in your packet, you have the minutes from January 6th, 2022 Planning Board meeting. If anybody had a chance to take a look at those, I want to make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written or whether they need amendments. Mr. Bean?
Motion to approve.
All right, so you have a motion to approve the minutes as presented for January 6th. Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? So two abstentions, Scott?
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so that motion passes. Communications?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Planning Board Chair and members of the planning board. The following communications came out before your packet was mailed. A-21-0290, El Roby Street. Email dated 1/13/2022 from Mark Repagula, fire comments. 1/20/22 email, letter actually, Joe Mandola, engineering comments. 1/20/2022, 19 Roby Street postponed to February 17th meeting. A-21-0291, 76 and 80 Ridge Road. 1/13/2022, Mark Repagula, fire comments. And 1/18/2022, letter, Joe Mandola, engineering comments. A-21-0292, 546 Amber Street. 1/13/2022, Mark Repagula, fire comments. 1/14/2022, Joe Mandola, engineering comments. And 1/19/2022 is the amended staff report with some clarifications and corrections that's in your packet. And that's it.
Okay, thanks a lot. All right, next up, report of chairman, committee, and liaison. I don't know if anybody has anything for tonight? Nothing, okay. So we'll go ahead and move on with our agenda. Next up, old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans. Case A-21-0177, that's still table two, March at this point, so we won't hear that tonight. Next up, we, just for general information, so the three cases we heard last time around, we're going to rehear essentially those cases. What's going to happen here is I'm going to ask for us to take jurisdiction again, and then if we do such, which I'm expecting, I guess, I'm going to ask the applicant just to essentially remind us what the case was about. I don't need a full presentation, but just a reminder of the subject matter of the case. I'm going to open the, I'll open these cases for public comment, see if there's any public comment out there. After that, we'll go into the meeting and we'll essentially re, or adjudicate the case again, so. So first up, case A-21-0267. Anybody from the board want to make a motion as to whether we can retake jurisdiction of this case? This is a old business site plan from Ross Common Investments LLC, proposed site plan amendment to previous auto storage lot, adding 4,980 square foot of auto auction building. This was at West Glenwood Street, 131 West Glenwood. Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a recommendation that the board accepts jurisdiction of case number A-21-0267, Ross Common Investments.
Okay, so we have that motion to again take jurisdiction of A-21-0267. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Bean. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, that motion passes. Okay, so do we have someone from the applicant that, really what I'm looking for here is just a couple-minute reminder of case summary?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, this is Paul Chisholm with Keach Nordstrom Associates. We're the surveyors and engineers of record for the project.
Okay.
The project, obviously, as you mentioned, is 131 West Glenwood Street. You guys have seen this site a couple times in the last few years, more recently for an auto storage lot. I'm going to share my screen here, just so you can see what it is. Basically, this proposal will amend that previous auto storage lot approval just by adding a 5,000, or a little less, slightly less than a 5,000 square foot auto auction building on the south end of the site. You know, this site, it's under construction currently. It's next to Route 3, BJ's, the Toyota storage lot to the north, and will have access from West Glenwood Street. There was a couple waivers associated with it. One was approved last time with the auto storage lot as well for existing features within 1,000 feet of the site. And then a second waiver request for building materials. Last time on, we obviously had the architect on to kind of show a sample, although by Zoom, you know, you still got to see a little bit of that. He's not on tonight, but basically, the total number of storage spaces is reduced because we were taking out that blast island. You can see there was about five of these areas before where cars were going to be stored. That obviously just changes around with the minor amendments to get a new building on there. Some other changes to the site just included bringing utilities up, water, sewer, gas, that type of thing. The stormwater system didn't change at all. There was actually a slight reduction in impervious area on site, so nothing needed to change there. So yeah, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Certainly happy to dive into anything a little bit deeper, should anybody have any questions.
Okay, can you go ahead and stop sharing your screen? Thanks. So at this point, I'll ask, is there any other, any further questions by the board of the applicant? Hearing none. I'll go ahead and open this case up to public comment. So let me just read this procedure first, so everybody understands it, because I didn't actually go over it at the beginning. So just during the public hearing, the applicant will be given time to represent, overview, description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree to the recommended staff stipulations. The board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions. I'll then ask for testimony from the audience. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan may speak. You can come forward to the microphone, or you can unmute on Zoom. State your name and address for record. This is your time to express concerns or ask questions regarding the plan. I'll then ask if anybody has any comments or wishing to speak in favor of the plan. And the board will then have one last follow-up. The applicant will be given a rebuttal period, which time they can speak to anything that the, or any questions that the public may have. And then after this is all completed, we will end the public hearing. We'll resume a public meeting, at which time we'll deliberate and vote on the application before us. So at this time, for this case, again, this is A-21-0267, Ross Common Investments. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody here. Anybody on Zoom? Anybody up there? Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Audience? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, I'm not hearing any comments, so I will, any further, any final comments by the board? All right, hearing done, I will go ahead and close that hearing then. So again, this is a case we've heard before, and most people are pretty aware of it. So what I'm looking for is a motion. There is a updated memo in your packet that has the stipulations that were discussed the last time. I think there was 15 of them, basically. Does anybody have any discussion, or is anybody ready to make a motion? Mr. Varley? Yeah?
Mr. Bean? No, no, no. I want to see how you do it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve old business case number A-21-0267 site plan. And, excuse me, that motion is with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in Site Plan NRO Section 190-146D. And there will be a total of, sorry, 15 stipulations. The first three of those, I'm sorry, the first is reading in, reading is written in the updated memo staff report from January 20th. The next two stipulations are both waiver requests and will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And then stipulations four through 15 also is written in the staff memo dated January 20th.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve with the 15 stipulations. Do you have a second? We'll take a second first. Yeah, Mr. Hirsch? Second? Okay. Discussion, Dan?
Yeah, sorry, I should have brought it up earlier, but condition number five can be removed because they have satisfied all of Joe Mandola's comments.
Okay, all right.
I will amend my motion by removing original stipulation number five and renumbering or admitting stipulations.
Okay, do you want to still second that, Mr. Hirsch? Okay, so we have that amended motion. Any further discussion? Mr. Peterson?
Question for the chair. I was not present for the January 6th meeting. Should I abstain from this vote?
I think that's up to you, but I think it's a reasonable.
I didn't hear what they had to say.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's reasonable. All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? So we have one abstention. And that motion passes. Okay. Next up, let me get through the agenda here. This is going to be case number A-21-0286, Amherst Real Estate Company owner. U-Haul Company of Eastern Mass applicant, proposed site plan amendment to expand existing U-Haul facility by adding 6,000 square feet of storage units. This property was located at, or is located at 11 Northwest Boulevard. So we have a motion to retake jurisdiction of this case. A motion by Mr. Hirsch to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, that motion passes. Do we have someone for the applicant to just give us a quick reminder what this case is about?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Earl Blatchford from Hayner Swanson. Just briefly, we are here for a change of use from the long-time use of the property at 11 Northwest Boulevard of truck and trailer leasing by U-Haul. That operation has been moved over to the 476 Amherst Street site, which was approved a couple of years ago. And the front side is up and running now.
Yep.
The proposed use is, will be primarily self-storage and with a minor use of, they want to have the ability to lease a couple of vans for anybody using the storage units that need a larger vehicle to move blinds in or out. The, we're doing some minor modifications to the pavement. We're adding about 2,100 square feet of pavement from the existing. As was discussed before, the buildings are prefab buildings. Once the modifications are done with the pavement, the buildings will be brought in on a flatbed truck, set with a crane and anchored securely in place. We're doing stormwater management improvements, some landscaping improvements, and adding site lighting on the new buildings, coupled with the existing pole-mounted lighting and the lighting that's on the existing office building, which is going to remain. We still, we're using the existing driveway. And the stormwater improvements that we're doing, we're taking the existing stormwater swale, brass swale, which was done with the original site plan. We're going to clean that up and add a rain guard to enhance the stormwater treatment. As was discussed on January 6th, we've addressed the planning comments. We addressed the fire department's comments. They were all, actually, they didn't have comments. They were all set with their initial review. The only thing that has changed since January 6th, I spoke with Joe Mandola this morning. He is all set with our January 6th response letter to his January 3rd comments. And you should have an email to that effect, which he sent out this morning. And we're in agreement with the stipulations in the staff report. And I'll be happy to answer any questions the board or audience has.
Okay, thanks a lot. Anybody from the board have any additional questions for the applicant? Hearing done, I'll go ahead and open this case, again, A-21-0286, to the public. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern? Okay, I'm seeing nobody here. Anybody on Zoom? Okay. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Audience or Zoom? Okay, I'm not hearing anymore. So anybody from the board have any final questions? I'll go ahead and close the hearing on A-21-0286. Okay, so we have the case that we've heard once here. Anybody, it would be the same kind of situation here, looking for a motion. We have a new staff report. Dan, is that accurate, the comments are all squared away?
Yeah, no, no changes.
Okay, so we could get rid of number six, is that accurate?
Well, I think we should keep it. We, they've agreed in principle what the adjustments will be, but we just want to see the final plan, so.
We'll leave them in there, yeah.
Yeah, leave it in there, but essentially, we're signed off.
Okay. So somebody want to make a motion? Mr. Varley?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve old business project A-21-0286 site plan with the finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in the site plan NRO Section 1I-146D. And that motion will have a total of 11 stipulations. The first three of those stipulations are all waiver requests and will all read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And those three stipulations and the remaining stipulations, all to read as written in the updated staff memo dated January 20th, 2022.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Varley. So we have that motion to approve with the stated stipulations for case A-21-0286. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Bean. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, so we have one abstention, the rest in favor. Okay, so that passes. Next up.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Next up, old business site plan, this is case A-21-0287, Cash Max Properties LLC. Proposed site plan amendment to change the use from, of 358 square foot of residential to retail, convenience store use, and to formally classify 1,518 square feet of an existing residential unit as legally non-conforming. This property was located at 136 East Hollis Street. Do we have anybody who wants to make a motion to retake jurisdiction of this case? Mr. Ballinger?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
So we have a motion by Mr. Ballinger to retake jurisdiction. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Do we have someone from the applicant that would just briefly summarize the case for us again?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Steve Auger. I'm a project manager with Hayner Swanson, and our office is located at 3 Congress Street in Nashua. Just to quickly summarize, the plan before you is a change of use plan. It serves two functions. It amends plan number NR-0867 to change 358 square feet of residential to convenience store. And as you mentioned, it formally classifies existing one-story, 1,518-square-foot residential unit as residential. And if that seems a little confusing, simply put, one of the units sometime within the past 20 years was converted from a parked commercial building to a residential unit. And as far as we can tell, it was done by the former landowner, and we don't believe that it was, for lack of a better word, we don't think it was done legally. It didn't follow the proper protocol of going through the building department and the planning department. So we're just looking to legally classify that as a residential unit. So the building overall, on the first floor, if you look at that little one-story knockout behind the building, that is currently a studio apartment. And that is the 358 square feet that we're proposing to change from residential to convenience store. So the layout of the first-floor unit in the multi-story part of the building, that will be all convenience store. And then above that, there are two other floors where there's one apartment on each floor. Those will remain two separate residential units. And then, as I mentioned, the one-story unit on the right, that would be the third residential unit. So really, the bulk of the approval here is just internal changes and classifications. We are proposing to add a small amount of the two-minute pavement out back where there are three parking spaces. And the point of that is just to make all three spaces conform width-wise. We need a total of 27 feet, and the existing conditions of that are only 25 feet. We did ask for one waiver. That was the standard existing conditions within 1,000 feet of the site. And as this is in the TOD zone, we did file a site plan suitability report with this. If you want, I could go through that again. Your call, whatever the pledge of the board is, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have, we have it in our packet, so we're okay. Yep.
Other than that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that the board might have.
Okay, thanks a lot. Anybody from the board have any further questions for the applicant? All right, hearing done, I will go ahead and open the list to the public for any comments or questions. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concern? And this is A-21-0287. I don't see anybody in the audience. Anybody on Zoom? Okay, anybody wishing to speak in favor? All right, hearing done. I'll give the board one last opportunity. Any final questions of the applicant while we're in the hearing? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing on A-21-0287, similar to the last couple here. Anybody have any other comments, or is somebody ready to make a motion? Mr. Hudson?
Condition four can be eliminated from this.
Okay, so we could remove that, that's already been addressed.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Varley? Yeah?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve old business A-21-0287 site plan. And that motion with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in Site Plan NRO Section 190-146D. And as revised, it will have a total of seven stipulations. The first stipulation being a waiver request, reading is granted, will not be contrary, the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulations two through three, reading is written in the updated staff memo dated January 20th, 2022. The stipulation number four will be removed. And five, six, seven, and eight will read as written in the updated staff memo dated January 20th, 2022.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Varley to approve. This is case, again, A-21-0287, with the stipulations as indicated. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any abstentions on that one? Or are you good to go with that hearing? Okay, so we're all, that's unanimous. Okay, thanks a lot. So next up, just a reminder, case number A-21-0290. That's Elizabeth Liu, owner, Matthew Plant applicant. They requested to move that to our February 17th, so that's just postponed. I don't think we need a motion to do that at that point, so. So I'm going to move on to new business subdivision plans. This is case number A-21-0291, Robert and Lorraine Pelletier, owner. John and Lois Bell applicant. This is an application and acceptance of a proposed lot line relocation. This property is located at 76 and 80 Ridge Road. So has anybody from the board had a chance to take a look at this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Hirsch?
Want to take jurisdiction of the business project A-21-0291?
All right, so a motion by Mr. Hirsch to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So we have jurisdiction of A-21-0291. Do we have somebody from the applicant that wants to present this case?
Yes, hello, good morning, good morning. Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Attorney Brittany White, and I represent Bob and Lorraine Pelletier in this lot line relocation application. Just for a brief overview, it's a simple lot line relocation. Bob and Lorraine Pelletier are longtime residents of Nashua. They are recently moved and are looking to sell their family home at 76 Ridge Road. They are asking for a lot line relocation to simply give their neighbors a little more land. They've been good neighbors for a long time, the Bells, and have both agreed to this. We have outlined in the plan the section to be given, to have adjusted. And we have also shown that there's room for the garage and driveway shown in the plan. I can share my screen if that's helpful.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, there we go. Just to, so you can see, this, this area is what's being moved. I also have on Zoom with me the Meridian Land Services Company, who has made the plan, and Mr. Samuel Ingram, who can also answer any questions regarding the plan. And I can also answer any questions you may have as well.
Okay. All right. So anybody from the board have any questions for the applicant or the land planner? Okay, I'm not hearing any at this point. I will go ahead and open this up then for public questions. And there is nobody in the audience in here, so. But is there anybody on Zoom wishing to speak in opposition or concern or have a question of the plan? Not seeing anybody? Okay. Can you stop sharing your screen just in case? Because sometimes we can see people in the audience a little better. Yeah, thanks. Nobody there? Yep, okay. All right, anybody from the board have any further questions? Seems like a pretty straightforward. Okay, I think we're all set then. We'll go ahead and close the hearing on this. So we, we're now in the meeting. Seems like a pretty straightforward lot line relocation between some neighbors here. Doesn't appear to have any concerns. But anybody from the board have any comments or wanna talk about anything regarding it? It looks like it, okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion then. Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve new business, project or case number eight twenty-one dash zero two nine one. Ridge Road, Nashua, New Hampshire. Finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in NRO one ninety dash one thirty-eight G. Subject to four conditions. The first of which is a waiver request of section one ninety, two eighty-two B nine, which shall read, is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulations two through four as written in the staff report.
Yeah, go ahead, Linda.
Could we add a stipulation? We did receive comments in a letter from Joe Mendola dated January eighteenth that we'd like to have incorporated that prior to the chair signing the plan. Those will be addressed to the satisfaction of the Division of Public Works.
Okay. Mr. Ballinger, would you want to amend your motion to add that January eighteenth?
Yes, certainly, Mr. Chair, thank you. I would like to add a stipulation number five that comments from the engineering staff dated January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Be addressed prior to the chair signing the plan and approved by the Department of Public Works.
Okay, so we have this motion to approve. This is again case number eight twenty-one dash zero two nine one with the five stipulations as stated by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have any second for that? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? Mr. Mann?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious, comment number two. It's noted that an existing shed and part of an existing pool deck are within the approximate limits of Old Ridge Road right-of-way. Doesn't seem like there's any action. It's just noting that for the record?
Yeah, seems like it, yep. Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, that's correct. We just noted that that's an existing addition, no changes are proposed. That right-of-way is not, not in use for any activity or anything really, so. We didn't know, we didn't know if there's any issues with either of those, but we just figured we should note them for the record.
Okay, great, thanks. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next up, we have, let me get back to my agenda. This is case number eight twenty-one dash zero two nine two. This is Weston Associates Development Company, Inc., owner Buckley Amherst LLC applicant. This is an application and acceptance of proposed amendment to NR one seven six three to show a restaurant and lounge with up to two hundred and seventy-five seats and an outdoor patio and retail space. This property is located at five forty-six Amherst Street. So first up, for the board, anybody had a chance to take a look at this application and wanna make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Mann to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion on the jurisdiction? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? That's unanimous. So we have jurisdiction and go ahead if you're, present?
Okay. Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, Three Congress Street here in Nashua. Let me know if you can hear me okay through the mask up here.
Yeah, it's fine.
Here tonight, representing Buckley Amherst LLC at five forty-six Amherst Street. Joining me here tonight is Attorney Brad Westgate with Weiner and Bennett, along with Michael and Ian Buckley, who are the applicants for this project. We're here tonight seeking approval for a proposed change of use site plan to convert the existing vacant building from an educational office use to a restaurant retail use, along with associated site improvements. So, Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, I'd just like to provide a brief presentation, after which we'd be happy to answer any questions
Sure.
from the board. Linda's got the aerial photo up of the site. As mentioned, five forty-six Amherst Street, map H lot one seven eight. It's about a three-acre parcel located mostly in the general business zone. There is a small section located in the PI Park Industrial Zone. It's also located within the City of Nashua Watershed Protection District. And there's a portion of the site that's located within the New Hampshire DES Protected Shoreland, associated with Round Pond. The site is abutted by industrial uses to the south, Round Pond to the north, Amherst Street and various commercial uses, Millstone Residential condominium to the north and east. As you can see from the photo, the existing site is developed. It contains a one-story seventeen thousand square-foot building, along with associated site improvements. Previous use was an educational office used, associated with Southern New Hampshire University. I believe the building has been vacant for at least five years. The current owner, Weston Associates Development Company, purchased the property in two thousand eighteen. As I mentioned, the majority of the existing site is developed, with the exception of a wooded buffer along Round Pond. The site contains two parking lots, each with separate curb cuts out onto Amherst Street, one to the north, one to the south of the existing building. The north parking area has about fourteen parking spaces. The southerly parking area has about a hundred and twenty-six, totaling a hundred and forty parking spaces on the site. If you look at the aerial photo, you can see that there is an existing physical driveway connection to the rear abutting property, lot one fifty-eight. So we are not aware of any formal agreement or easement that's in place here. It's always historically been used. I do know that the applicant has made contact with that property owner. They are aware of this project and there's no, no changes to that situation as of, as of right now, other than the historical use, which will continue of that physical connection. The existing building is serviced by public sewer, water by Penachuck, gas, and overhead electric and telecommunications utilities. As I mentioned, we've got some wetland and shoreland buffers associated with Round Pond that are shown on the plan. There's a forty-foot, City of Nashua wetland buffer. There's a two hundred foot, two hundred fifty-foot protected shoreland, as well as a fifty-foot restrictive conservation area by deed. All those are shown on the plan. Topography of the site is generally flat and drains westerly towards Round Pond. There's no formal drainage or stormwater management system that exists on-site today. And this section of Amherst Street was paved in July of two thousand nineteen, therefore is under moratorium until July of two thousand twenty-four. There were some recent approvals that were granted on the site. There's actually a valid site plan that's in effect, which was granted to Weston in December of two thousand nineteen for a new ground-up retail restaurant project that was before this board. They were granted two separate one-year extensions, most recently of November of last year. And that approval would be withdrawn if the current application is approved and upon transfer of the property to the current applicant. Linda, if you could flip to the master site plan, please. She'll be the next slide. So as I mentioned, we're here tonight with a proposal to convert the existing vacant building from an educational office use to a restaurant retail use, along with associated site improvements. The building breakdown, as I mentioned, it's about seventeen thousand square feet now. So we would propose to use about fourteen thousand square feet for the restaurant and about three thousand feet for a retail use. We are proposing a new outdoor patio to be constructed at the rear of the existing building to face Round Pond. The restaurant would include two hundred and seventy-five seats. Two hundred of those seats would be inside and seventy-five would be on the patio. The patio is a combination outdoor-indoor patio. So the exact restaurant type and style is yet to be determined. I don't have a lot of details for you in terms of the exact type of restaurant that will be in. We can say that the building, or the restaurant will be locally owned and operated with the same high quality and uniqueness in line with the Buckley's team current restaurants in the area. If granted approvals, the Buckley team will move forward with closing on the property and then immediately engage with an architect to begin finalizing their design and their vision for this restaurant. The hours of operation, as noted on the plan, the restaurant Monday to Sunday, eleven AM to eleven PM. The retail use Monday through Sunday, ten AM to seven PM. Conceptual building and floor plans, along with exterior elevations, were included in the site plan package to illustrate the current vision that the Buckley team has for the restaurant and the property. As noted above, the exact design elements are yet to be determined. Given that there's an existing building, we've conservatively requested a waiver from the non-residential building design standards as part of this application. Notable site improvements, the existing curb cuts will remain as they are today. The northerly parking lot will be used mostly for deliveries, employee parking, and also for the retail use. Existing stairs will be removed in that location and replaced with a new ramp for deliveries. That's shown on the plan. And there's really no other improvements that are being proposed in that northerly parking area. The southerly parking area, we're proposing to essentially reconstruct in kind. Most of that will be reclaimed in place. And we are adding a section of porous pavement that will be closest to Round Pond. We are proposing some ADA and sidewalk improvements at the building, the main building entrances that face the parking lot. There'll be a hundred and thirty-five spaces total, so we've lost about five spaces compared to what's out there now. We've pulled back a little bit in a couple areas with, with pavement and due to the ADA improvement. So we've lost about five what's out there now. We're well in excess of what's required minimum by code. The existing utility services will remain in place and continue to service the building. We are not proposing any new site lighting or landscaping improvements. And since we are redeveloping within the protected shoreland, we have gone ahead and filed a DES shoreline protection permit application. I just touched briefly on porous pavement. I do wanna talk about stormwater and the improvements that we're making out on the site. We're certainly maintaining the existing drainage patterns, which is the site drains to Round Pond. As I mentioned, we are removing small sections of existing pavement, specifically around the building and the proposed patio. We are installing a new porous pavement section. It's about twenty spaces adjacent to Round Pond. We've also got a new leaching catch basin area to be added near the ADA parking lot. These new practices will accommodate runoff from the majority of the southerly parking lot as it sheet flows towards the pond. The project will result in a slight decrease in impervious and will certainly improve the quality and quantity of runoff that's entering Round Pond compared with the existing condition. With regards to traffic, a traffic impact memo and TIR worksheet was prepared by the project's traffic consultant, Steve Pernaud, dated December sixth, two thousand twenty-one. The memo includes a trip generation analysis for the proposed change of use, analyzing the restaurant retail use to the previously approved educational office use. DOT traffic counts pre-COVID show that the annual traffic volumes around, along this section is about thirty-five thousand vehicles a day. There was some other information provided in there for a two thousand twenty count. I think it was around twenty-nine thousand, something like that. So it was certainly a little bit of a dip before COVID, but I thought it was important to, to give you the pre-COVID amounts. As expected, the weekly traffic volumes peak in the mornings, seven to eight and eight to nine AM, four to five PM and five to six PM in the evening. Based on the ITE manual criteria, the proposed development will generate an increase of approximately a hundred ninety-two total vehicle trips during a typical weekday, twenty-four-hour period, which is ninety-six arrivals and ninety-six departures compared with the existing use. During peak hour periods, the proposed development will generate an increase of approximately sixty vehicle trips in the PM peak hour, when both the restaurant and retail use will be open. Based on the TIR worksheet that's submitted, we are well under the thresholds that are required for a full traffic study for this type of project. Of course, the memo was reviewed by the city's traffic engineer and we didn't receive any comments. The traffic engineer did request the applicant pay a contribution of nineteen thousand four hundred towards the Amherst Street traffic corridor improvements, which the applicant is agreeable to. Mr. Chair, we are requesting three waivers tonight. I'd just like to read in by reference our waiver request letter dated January third, two thousand twenty-two. I'm happy to go into detail on each of these different waiver requests. The first waiver request is for existing conditions. The second, as I mentioned, is for non-residential building design standards. And the third is for a landscape parking island. With regards to staff comments, we believe we've addressed all planning, fire, and Penachuck Water Works comments received to date. The project was reviewed by Penachuck due to its location within the Watershed Protection District. With regards to engineering, we received comments on Friday and we worked with staff to clarify comments in the last day or so, which we certainly appreciate their time in helping us, what I think, get to the finish line and an understanding. We submitted a letter today outlining how we will respond to those various comments and are certainly confident we can address their comments going forward to their satisfaction. So in summary, we believe the proposed application is complete and conforms with the applicable site plan regulations. We believe the proposed site is being redeveloped in a responsible manner and is a great opportunity to bring to life a long vacant building in sight along one of Nashua's main corridors. We've reviewed the staff report and are okay with the suggested conditions of approval. The one item on there which we'd like to bring to the board's attention, and it may be just kind of a procedural thing, but we are asking for a waiver tonight from the non-residential building design standards, one ninety-one seventy-two. So we just call to attention condition number ten, which speaks to working with staff to create an attractive exterior utilizing approved materials under that section. Certainly work, you know, willing to work with staff, but given that we're working with an existing building, we were hoping to not be in a position where we would have to come back to ask for a waiver on the exterior materials. So we can discuss that further. So that concludes my presentation. And like I said, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Questions by the board? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, this is probably better directed towards, towards staff. We've seen an application in the past where proposed fourth leg connecting with the Blackstone Amherst Street intersection is, is proposed. Even though there's no formal, I guess, easement across access agreement with abutting properties, is, is it possible that the site could utilize that, that signal for access? Just right now, it would be limited to right in, right out. And I'm sure they would appreciate signalized access, but I don't know what they're permitted to have or not permitted to have based on existing or non-existing access agreements.
Yes, I, I think our plan is, is different from the site plan that was approved. We're not, we're not proposing any access at that location. We're sticking to what we have in terms of the existing curb cuts that are out there.
I, I guess, just to follow on, Mr. Chair, if someone else were to construct that, would they be permitted to, to utilize that? Is there any possibility, improvements made by others that you would be able to take advantage of? Or is it, is it just the, the two curb cuts as they presently exist on Amherst? advantage of, or is it just the two curb cuts as they presently exist on Amherst Street?
So I can defer to Attorney Westgate on this, too. I believe this property is locked into two curb cuts, and so they were utilizing a new curb cut and then abandoning one of the existing ones, but I'll let Attorney Westgate speak.
And I, just for the record, I wasn't trying to make it more complicated than it needed to be. I just know that there has been improvements proposed by others that were approved by this board. I just didn't know if there was the possibility of this applicant obtaining access via that new fourth leg, so thank you.
Yeah, for the record, Mr. Chairman, my name's Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer with Weiner Bennett in Nashville, one-eleven Concord Street. The research we did, both in title and analyzing the DOT curb cut takings and widenings of Amherst Street over the years, locks us into those two curb cuts. That's really all we have the rights for. We don't have, as Tom had indicated, there's the sort of informal back access to the parking lot to the rear of a third-party property, but there's no written easement to that effect, so you can't really bank on any of that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I can just speak to that fourth leg quickly. We worked with the previous, on the previous project with the applicant quite extensively, trying to make a fourth leg work. It wasn't, was not ideal, given the skewed approach. There's limited room between the intersection and the pond. So although we found a solution that made it work, it really wasn't ideal. The other thing is it required an easement to place a mast arm on the opposite side of the street on property that's owned by the condo association, and so although we did have, we did get to the point of having draft easement documents together for that, it was challenging, just to say the least. So this configuration with the right in, right out, as long as it's acceptable to the applicant, I think is suitable, and we have no plans to construct a fourth leg of that intersection otherwise.
Okay.
The other last piece to that is, of course, there's a different approach with the other project, keeping the existing building due to the buffers and the deed restrictions I mentioned. That leg would be a dead end at the northerly parking lot as it is now. You would really need to, you know, raise the building and build a new building to make that connection work, so just a different approach we're going with here.
Okay, and I appreciate the clarification. I just didn't know how that theoretical fourth leg, that design had progressed, so I just didn't know how it would possibly benefit this applicant, but that was it. So thank you, thank you everyone for the clarification.
Thanks. Other questions? Mr. Barley?
I just had two quick questions on two of the waivers. So just, so I understand the waiver request for the architectural standards. I gather it just has to do with the location of the entryways, and so is it basically, you want to have one entryway that's facing the parking, whereas the standard would require a second entryway, you know, facing Amherst Street? Is that the idea?
Correct. It's also roof lines. There's a couple elements to that regulation, where we meet or may not meet, and we're not really sure exactly what we're doing in terms of, I mean, I think we've represented the, conceptually, here's where we want the storefronts facing the parking lot, facing the northerly, but they just haven't gone down that road yet. So we're happy to review with staff. We're just, we're hoping to get relief for the entire section so that we've got some flexibility in terms of how we can dress up the existing building.
Right, and to be clear, I don't have any concern, you know, the elevations that were provided. I mean, I think that this design looks good. The other question I had is, again, just a clarification on the waiver with respect to the landscape medians in the parking. So this is, you're just maintaining the status quo in terms of the parking. You're not adding parking, you're not changing the layout, and so there's no existing landscape medians now, and you're just asking not to have to add them essentially?
Correct, exactly. We're maintaining the existing layout. We're reconstructing the parking lot in kind, and we're actually losing five spaces to pull back a little bit on impervious.
Okay, thank you.
So I just have a question for staff. So functionally speaking, the waiver of NRO one ninety to one seventy-two, to allow the ability for them to have some flexibility with the roof lines and stuff, would we remove the E one, or?
Yeah, might as well, just go one ninety, one seventy-two if you feel.
Yeah, we could just take the E one off, right? Does that make sense, or is it just E, or?
Just one ninety, one seventy-two.
Okay, so we could just take that off. And then the comments from Joe Mandola, the date on that one was?
January fourteenth.
January fourteenth. And then functionally speaking, with regard to the Amherst Street corridor contribution, is that, is that something we should add to this? I know they talked about being okay with that.
You want to put the dollar amount in?
It's covered in stipulation number eight.
It's in, covered in number eight? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, as long as it's in the stipulation eight already, then it's fine. I don't have any other comments. Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I have an additional comment for staff. I think in our original packet, there was thirteen stipulations.
Correct.
And in the one we received late, there's twelve. And to address Mr. Zajak's point, it looks like the stipulation regarding one ninety, one seventy-two still appears in both. Is that nullified if we modify?
No, the only condition that was removed was the fire condition because they had no comments.
Okay, so just fire, so I guess number ten in the paper, but number nine in the updated, where it's, there's still a reference to one ninety dash one seventy-two. Does that need to still be stipulated, or is that covered if we modify condition number two to omit?
You can modify condition number two to one ninety, one seventy-two, and just for architectural, you know, that takes in the whole architectural ordinance, so that gives them the flexibility.
Okay.
I think you leave nine in just to give planning staff the ability to.
To work with.
Part of.
Okay, okay. Appreciate it.
Do we want to leave it in but eliminate the reference to one ninety, one seventy-two to avoid the confusion about the?
Oh, in number nine?
Okay.
In number nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, that might be good.
Should we just scratch under one ninety, one seventy-two?
Yeah.
Correct, correct, yeah, that's fine, one ninety, one seventy-two. I'm jumping around between my corrected one and my old one, so.
Any other questions for the applicant while we're in hearing from the board? Mr. Mian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious, I was looking at your plan, I'm looking on Google Maps. It looks like there's another access at the southern end of the lower parking lot that loops around the Capitol Street. Is that gated, or is that?
Yeah, that was the reference I was making to earlier. So there's a physical driveway connection between this property and the property there. I think it's Conway Printers. So there is a physical connection out through their parking lot to Capitol Street. It's historically been used as a shared driveway or an open driveway. There is no gate or anything there. There is no formal easement. Both property owners are aware of it, and it's kind of a private matter and between those two parties. So there is no gate, there is no formal easement, but the driveway is there, the physical connection is there.
So Capitol Street allows a left turn on Amherst?
It does, yes. That's an unsignalized intersection there.
Other questions by the board for the applicant while we're in the hearing? Okay, I'm not hearing any.
Thank you.
Thanks. At this point, I'll ask, does anybody in the audience or on Zoom wish to speak in opposition, concerned, or have a question of the plan? Nobody up there? Okay. Anybody want to speak in favor of the plan? Okay, at this point, I'll give the board one last opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff while we're in the hearing. Okay, I'll go ahead and close the hearing. All right, so we have an update. Personally, I think this is a great use of the site. I mean, we've seen this site so many times in this board. I'd really like to see it, you know, this looks like a great idea to me, frankly. It would be nice to see that site get developed into something that's, you know, of value here, so I think I'm a big fan, but I'm welcome to hear anybody else's comments, or Mr. Mian?
Yeah, I was just looking at the Imagine Nashville, the new plan for the region, and the section on retrofitting major corridors, Amherst Street corridor, more attractive, coherent, promote local business activity. I mean, it seems like a slam on that, terrific, and we certainly know Buckleys and what they have done, and this is great.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else? Mr. Barley?
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I'm really excited to see this development here, and I agree with Mr. Mian, you know, I'd love to see new Buckleys restaurant up there and more local businesses, local restaurants in Nashville. This is, so I think it's a great use as well.
Anybody else? Comments? Okay, if not, anybody want to make a motion? Remind anybody the discussion on the stipulations, what I think we ended up with from staff in the discussion was stipulation number two, the E one could be removed. Stipulation number seven, the date was January fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and stipulation number nine, I think we could remove the one ninety dash one seventy-two because we're really just talking about architectural features there. Those were the three sort of modifications that seemed like they made some sense to everybody. So anybody want to make a motion?
Actually, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, just for clarification.
Yeah.
No issue with eliminating the reference to one ninety dash one seventy-two? Do you also have to take out the approved materials? Do we have to make number nine even more generic than just removing the one ninety, one seventy-two?
Well, if you're going to eliminate the whole number nine, I'll take it all out, but I think you're going to still need the one ninety, one seventy-two for number two.
Yeah, number two. I think he's talking about in number nine.
Yes, I was referring to number nine. I didn't know if you use the term approved materials, if that inherently loops you back into one ninety, one seventy-two.
Right, because I think we were talking about keeping nine, but just eliminating the reference to one ninety, one seventy-two to avoid confusion, but, right, Mr. Ballinger, to your point, do we simply say the applicant will work with planning staff to create an attractive exterior?
Period, yeah.
Right?
That's fine.
Sure.
Okay, all right, so did you want to make a motion, Mr. Ballinger?
Yeah, I might unbox myself. Yes, Mr. Chair, I would, I would like to make a motion to approve new business, eight twenty-one dash zero two nine two, site plan, Weston Associates, property located at five forty-six Amherst Street, finding that it does meet the conditions of site plan NRO one ninety dash one forty-six D, subject to twelve conditions. First is a waiver request of NRO one ninety dash two seven nine EE with respect to existing conditions, shall read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of regulation. Stipulation number two is a waiver request of NRO one ninety dash one seventy-two E one regarding entryways on all street frontage, shall read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number three is also a waiver request of NRO one ninety dash one eighty-four D one with respect to grass medians, shall read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation four through six, as written in the staff report. Stipulation number seven shall be amended to the engineering letter dated January fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Stipulation number eight, as written in the staff report. Stipulation number nine shall read the applicant will work with planning staff to create an attractive exterior. Stipulations ten through twelve, as written in the staff report.
Okay. All right, so we have that motion to approve, eight twenty-one dash zero two nine two. Mr. Hudson?
I'm just confused because I thought, I thought we were going to eliminate E I from.
Oh, yeah, we probably should, because I think, I think the roof line stuff is in, would you be open to amending your motion for the waiver on number two to remove the E one reference?
You are correct. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to amend stipulation number two to read as follows, the request for a waiver of NRO one ninety dash one seven two.
Okay.
Shall read is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation.
All right, excellent. So we have that motion to approve with the twelve stipulations as stated by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Mian. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Thank you. All right. So next up on the agenda, a review of the tentative agenda that determines proposals of any proposals of regional impact. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at this technical review meeting agenda? It's from the eighteenth.
Just a moment. Unless Mr. Ballinger's already ready to make it.
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that there are no projects of regional impact based on the technical review meeting of January third, twenty twenty-two.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger. There are no proposals of regional impact on the tentative agenda. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Barley. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay. All right, so discussion items, I think, Linda, did you just want to summarize, like, what the plan was for the third?
Sure, so for our next planning board meeting, February third, we do not have any new cases. So in lieu of the planning board meeting, we are required to have annual training, and what we'd like to do is a presentation, it should be between thirty minutes and an hour. It's a review of the flexible use overlay district because we are going to be having a case coming up within the next couple months that is in that zone, and it's a little different in that, for that, anything in that area, they would actually have to come to the planning board for variances. So we're going to have Carter Falk, the deputy zoning manager, come in and kind of explain a little bit of the process, and just kind of give a little briefing on that area, the Hall's Corner, Maplewood, and, you know, if you have any questions, you can ask, you know, at that time about it. So that will just be prepared so when it does come to planning board.
Okay.
We're going to do it in room two oh eight, there'll be no Zoom option, you know, just be in two oh eight, and if you want to meet earlier, we can do that, or if you'd rather stick with the seven P.M., it's up to the board.
Anybody want earlier? Seven works pretty well, so stick with seven.
Which day?
February third.
Thursday, February third.
I mean, it's a normally scheduled meeting, but.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
I'm amenable if anyone has, kind of needs to change it after the fact, that's okay, but I don't have an issue.
I think we'll stick with the timing, maybe we have a better shot of showing up at the right time.
I'll probably be out of town. Is there any, is it going to be recorded?
We're not going to, I don't think we're doing it through Zoom, but I can, I can check with Matt. I think we can record it so that you can, and there'll be minutes, yeah, there'll be minutes available, so.
You might be able to audio record it.
Right.
Absolutely.
And it should only be a half hour to an hour, and we will send out an agenda and a, you know, reminder ahead of time.
Great. Okay. Any other discussion items? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Anybody? So we have motion to adjourn by Mr. Barley. All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes, we're adjourned at eight oh nine.
Efficient meeting. Good job, Mr. Chair.